To open the developer's workshop, the presentation by Bridget Grant regarding Woodford Mint Hill site plan by Childress Klein. If you'll come to the podium, give your name and your address for the record, please. You have the floor. I will remind you, we're only going for 20 minutes, so.
I'm in the presentation now.
And that's fine. And that's fine.
Good evening, Bridget Grant. I'm just consulting with Morgan Van Allen, 100 and Triumph Street, 34700. It is a pleasure to be here this evening. Mayor Simmons and members of the board. Bridget Grant, as I mentioned, here. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Thank you, John.
I'm here today on behalf of Childress Klein with Chris Thomas, as well as Margaret Packett with TriPoint Homes and Sean Chulley, our site planner, and just seeing on the overall vision for the plan. Do you?
Yeah.
All right, I apologize. I promise I will not read you this entire slide. Chris has mentioned this project to me over the years, and this all started back in 2001 when Childress Klein assembled 215 acres of recently completed 485 and Lawyers Road. In 2005, they partnered with General Grove, GDP, to rezone, annex, and purchase the property, anticipating a 1.3 million square feet of retail. At the time, it was called the Rivers of Mint Hill. Between 2005 and 2008, the site development began. They were working on rough grading of portion of the site, but unfortunately, the partner GDP failed or filed for Chapter 11 in 2008. It is a new secret that the retail business has undergone some major changes between 2009 and 2018. And during that time, Childress Klein acquired 100% ownership of the site. Between 2015 and 2021, Childress Klein's been working with NCDOT to invest and build the roundabout at Lawyers Road. They've also been addressing some longstanding safety concerns and anticipation of development of the site and securing some capital improvements with Charlotte for water to invest and build a regional pump station and forcing to serve the site from the surrounding area. So here we are today. Between 2022 and 2023, Childress Klein began work on the 505 to rebrand the project to Woodford and continue its longstanding work with land design to revise the development plan to reflect the current best practice, work conditions, and thankfully, CK has secured an anchor commitment to Woodford and has selected TriPoint Homes as its community development partner. I think everyone is familiar with where the site is in context. As I mentioned, it's located at the interchange, and it serves as a major gateway and entrance to Mint Hill. I'd like to step back. Instead of just looking at the site plan, when we get away from what type of store we're going to have here and what it's going to be, we start looking at the vision. The goal is to really create a complete place that's complementary and reflective of Mint Hill, develop something that provides convenient access to shopping and dining, that serves a multi-generational population, that builds upon outdoors and nature. With open space as a key organizing element, and of course, it's walkable. These images are intended to reflect the concepts that were really guiding the planning afterward throughout the process. As I mentioned, trails and open space are a key organizing element. Our site plan reflects extensive tree preservation, connectivity in a walkable environment, and the intent is for this to all be in a peaceful and relaxing environment. It probably goes without saying that we can't talk about development at an interchange without recognizing traffic and transportation impact. It's important for us to recognize the mitigation that will occur as part of the study. The TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis, will study 10 intersections within the sphere of influence and identify improvements that will mitigate traffic impacts of any of the anticipated development throughout phases. So again, this is just identifying intersections that we anticipate would be studied and mitigated with any development impacts. This is the whole schematic master plan that contains 215 acres. The site is broken into a series of villages that will comprise the entire community. We thought it'd be helpful to look at all of the villages individually. At this high level, I think it's really easy to see that the stream and the open space running through the center of the site establish that framework that sets up each of the villages, as well as the transportation network and our open space amenities. I'm not used to not having my ear flickered, thank you. This is the first village. It's Retail Village A. It's 43.7 acres, located closest to the interchange. This village is anticipated to include the grocery anchor hotel and has potential for proposed civic use, both a thorough road from the village. We've also identified the extension of bringways and trails of the area that we provide public parking for anyone who's visiting the site that wants to give a part with easy access. There are opportunities for programmable open space and close proximity to retail, as well as the BMPs. That's the type of open space when you're doing retail, but you have the opportunity for the there there. When you look at some of the images, you can see these are all intended to reflect the quality that we anticipate on the site. Retail Village B is 23.5 acres. It's a little further up on Lawyers Road with an opportunity for three anchors, as well as some smaller detail of L parcels. The images reflect a higher level of attention to architecture, as well as a sense of place. Outdoor dining, wire sidewalks, pedestrian amenities are a key ingredient of the work of developing this area. The first residential village is Village A. It's 15.84 acres that we anticipate developing in two phases. It's anticipated to develop homes, and you'll see there's a significant amount of open space central to the site, but also along the creek. All of the units here have direct access via green, not only through the road infrastructure, but via greenways along the creek, to the roads, and to the other villages throughout the community. Residential Village B is 32.8 acres and located below the creek in residential Village A. Residential Village will be anticipated having 130 single-family residential units developed by TriPoint. Margaret will be able to answer any questions specific to their process and to TriPoint brand, but generally speaking, TriPoint is known for developing semi-custom homes that are very content function and representative of the communities that they're located in. The last residential village is Residential Village C, approximately a 20-acre site, and adds the idea of building a multi-generational site. In addition to some additional townhomes, we're also providing senior living of the 200 units, ideas for the living within the area. The final village is the Office Village. It's six acres, and it's located between the residential and retail villages. While Office continues to be an ever-changing market, we recognize that open space and amenities are an important part of the elements today of the market, and so we're proposing approximately 156,000 square feet of office usage. When you step back and look at the project in full, the 215-acre site and the five villages, what are the benefits of the plan? What are we hoping to accomplish? We believe that we're able to provide an attractive and meaningful gateway from 485, a master plan that is incredibly thoughtful in the approach to mature uses that respect the environment. We recognize that open space is again a key ingredient to success. We've set aside 1.5 acres for future municipal needs. We understand that as the town grows, it's important to be mindful of the ability to expand services. The proposed mix of housing, contemplates not only meeting the needs of the diverse community, facing the ability for people to eat, stay, and downsize, but it's also the ability for young professionals to back to Mint Hill and have some place to live. We're providing that extension and transportation improvement, which we're always seeking to make sure that we increase the tax base that goes with it. The last slide is sort of a bonus slide. Branding, establishing logos, colors, signage, and other marketing materials are essential to setting a bar, increasing the bar. What type of place are we trying to create and who are we falling to? Woodford is envisioned to be reflective of a high-quality type of development of Mint Hill. We like to look at the visionary piece of it and not just get caught up in how many square feet of retail we have versus Office and units from the town of First National Family. It's really important to understand what this is all feeling like, what's the quality, and how does it all fit together. Our team is happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Henderson will start on your end of the dice this evening. Any questions or comments?
You used the term "contact sensitive." What do you mean by that?
TriPoint specifically, when they're developing your site, they're not particularly better. They don't like to have a brand that is something you see and you look at and go, oh, that's specifically a TriPoint. They like to look at key point architectural features and elements that are specific to the community, and look to see if there's a way they can pull those elements.
I've had the pleasure of speaking in front of this group before our commitment to Mint Hill. Hopefully, we'll be shown at Alton Creek, Downey Road, or about just our models. I think that the company that I work for, we do build a quality home, and we want to fit in the neighborhood. What we're seeing is working with our local municipalities, such an important part of my job, but understanding the local municipality and really being able to hear, not only to the group that I was speaking to here, but also the local community. Of engaging our local communities to really build and fit the architecture where we're working with. Or this group that, we don't build something off the shelf. We really do found the team locally and design a whole new package that fits. I know local municipalities are local.
So when you do that, if you're trying to fit the needs of Mint Hill, who determines that? Do you have a group of people who are from Mint Hill?
We do focus groups. So one perfect example that we'll be able to really cater to, the buyers that we will see at Alton Creek, we'll be able to take a sample size of those folks. Are they moving here from somewhere else, or are they local, moving from somewhere in Mint Hill? We'll be able to tell what our consumers are telling us. Really understand that as we design our product.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton.
I tried to run a quick count here. I'm looking like what's 700-plus residential units would be built?
You did a better job behind it all than I have, but yes, the diversity of single-family townhomes, as well as the senior housing units.
Okay. I just don't see how that's going to work in Mint Hill. You're putting 700 people on Lawyers Road, and even if it's only two people per household, 1,400-plus cars coming up and down Lawyers Road. With Idyllwild disapproving a project over in the Matthews area, I think the traffic is just going to be, our infrastructure will not hold it. And I know you talked about doing some roadwork, but to be able to do roadwork that would pass or move that kind of traffic, you're going to destroy our town, especially the downtown Also, you're talking about wanting to brand, your branding on that unit. I'm kind of proud of the branding we've done for Mint Hill.
Absolutely.
And my other thing is, you go from Pineville, almost every exit all the way to Concord Mills, there is a development, or a shopping center, or something up through there. So I just personally myself, I'm not in favor of the project. I think if you'd been done it a few years earlier, especially before the Matthews did theirs, but we got so much grief from the Matthews project on Idyllwild, and that wouldn't even our project. I couldn't imagine our citizens being behind this. So at this point, I could not support this project.
I would like to say that part of the TIA, along with the benefits of the TIA, we know we're all fighting for money from NCDOT and funding to be able to pay for infrastructure improvement. And with development, some developer dollars and private dollars to go into mitigating traffic improvement, that's one part of it. And the branding was not at all intended to be dismissive of Mint Hill branding. We know that you have a very strong brand. We don't want to pull from the downtown and the brand of Mint Hill. We want to help them know what's there and be proud to be part of that absolute progress.
I just think it's going to put too much of a strain on our town with the infrastructure, plus what it would cost us in police fire. I mean, it's just too much of a strain on our town for me for right now.
Commissioner Holton.
I actually am probably going to echo what Commissioner Dalton had said. It's, I mean, beyond popular belief, we don't have any control about what our neighbors have just accomplished down there, and this looks real similar to what's three miles up 485. And there's already been concerns about the road down there. While there's road improvements planned here, it's not where it matters. And where it matters is further in, because these folks are going to be coming this way. They're not going out. And density-wise, that's just a little extreme for what I think that we could even support.
I do think that through the traffic study, there's always a willingness to look at the opportunities that need to be explored, to see everything we can. Interestingly, now that we're going to the history, the free zone for 1.3 million square feet of car haul back in 2005, I think, to think about that, in some ways, it's actually a significant difference. To get to something that's actually a broader mix of uses of left transportation. And thankfully, we don't have 1.3 million square feet of empty.
And that's the thing. I mean, nothing against the fine folks with DOT, I think the world of them, but I don't have to have a degree in traffic management to stand out here at these four corners and see we're already at capacity. And adding that many more homes is just a recipe for disaster.
Commissioner Long. Yeah, on slide two, can you go back to that, John? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It was the one that showed the first or second slide she had for the project, for the proposed project, I'm sorry. One more. Yeah, it was showing the, not that one, the, all right, let's go one more, John. Yeah, you're, having been involved with that other project in 2005 to 2008 as a planning board member, and now we're going to start talking, making curb cuts all along Lawyers Road. And if I remember correctly, the state had allocated almost $12 million for road improvements, the state, not Mint Hill. And with the current condition of funding in Raleigh, I don't see us getting anywhere near that for highway improvements for this kind of project. So that in itself, regardless of the attributes of the project, I couldn't support it at this time. Anybody have anything further? If not, we'll wrap it up. I think you've seen what the majority of the board's thinking at this point in time. I have to go along with them as far as the density exceeds anything else we've got in Mint Hill currently. At a roughly 2.66 or something that I figured as I was writing those notes down, even with some of the different communities we've built, we've stayed at the two outside of Mint Hill, and everybody's heard me preach that too over the years. So the density is too high for me to even look at to begin with, with the density numbers. So with that being said, I don't think we're in favor of this project at that time, at this time.
To go back and explore and work through the options. We appreciate that feedback, and that's very important here tonight.
And we appreciate you showing it to us, and we'll be right here. Thank you. With that being said, I will close the developer's workshop at this time. We'll start the board meeting in about three or four minutes. Now called to order the meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Mint Hill, North Carolina, July 13th, 2023. We do have a quorum present to conduct business. I would ask Commissioner Henderson, if she would, at this time to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Lord, we just come before you this evening seeking your wisdom, seeking your guidance, and asking that you would lead us and direct us as we attempt to do the things that are in the best interest of our town. And we ask that you would just be with us and be with the people of this town who live here, and with all of the staff, and all of the leaders. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in standing in the state, repeating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is additions, deletions, or arrangement of agenda items. Seeing none. Item number four is to approve the amendments of the June 8th, 2023 regular meeting. So move. Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any questions, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five is the consent agenda. A, under the consent agenda, adopt local governmental resolution for the Mint Hill Police Department. B, accept the Mint Hill Village's streets for maintenance and 25 mile-per-hour speed limit reduction. C, accept the June tax collector's report. D, accept audit contract with N.R. Craven CPA, PLLC, and engagement letter. E, accept resolution exempting the town from qualifications-based selection of an engineering firm for telecommunications and security design services projects. Motion to approve. Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number six, public hearing concerning the approval of the execution and delivery of the contract, the town's financing of the projects, and the grant of security interest in the mortgage property. Tax parcel number 135-191-22, located at 6773 Lebanon Road. That public hearing is currently open. Do we have somebody here to speak to it, I believe? Mr. Goldsmith? Sir, if you would give us your full name and address, then for we, so we've got it for the records, then you are free to speak.
Sure, happy to. My name is Walter Goldsmith. I'm with First Tryon Advisors. We're based in Charlotte, North Carolina, at 6101 Carnegie Boulevard, and we serve as your financial advisor on this borrowing. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Great. Just to briefly tell you, we conducted a request for proposals process on your behalf. There were six banks that submitted proposals. This is all in your packet, which is a great response, a real compliment to you all. The winning bank in our recommendation was JP Morgan with an interest rate of 4.11%. That's for a 20-year loan. We asked for 15- and 20-year loans, and we looked at different prepayment provisions. We want you to have the flexibility to refinance if interest rates were to decline. So at the end of 10 years, you'll be able to refinance if interest rates decline. And the annual principal and interest payments will start out at about $1,009,000 and then decline over that 20-year period, all the way down to about $980,000. So great response from banks, great interest rate, and the next step will be back before you a month from now at your August meeting. But the next step is for us to complete all the documentation with the banks, and we'll get approval from the local government commission for the borrowing at their August meeting. So good result on the financing.
Very good. I don't have anybody else signed up to speak to this public hearing, do I? Thank you, sir. Having nobody else here, I will now close the public hearing concerning the approval of the execution and delivery of the contract, the town's financing of the projects, and the grounding of the security interest in the mortgage property. Tax parcel number 135-191-22, located at 6773 Lebanon Road. Item number seven is public comments, and we have one person signed up to speak. Maria Frye, if you'd like to come up. I believe I've got your official address here on the piece of paper.
I'm going to give it to you.
You better. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Maria Frye. I live at 2121 McManus Road, Midland, North Carolina. And despite what the post office would have you believe, I'm a resident within the Mint Hill ETJ. I'm proud to be so. My husband and I moved to North Carolina, sight unseen. At the time, I worked remotely from home. I didn't know anyone here and really never needed to leave the house. To acclimate to my new state, I found a pottery class to take. I met new friends and found myself rooted in a rich art community, which brought me peace during a busy and transitional time in life. Thanks to the support of the arts that I've always found within the area, and specifically in Mint Hill, my opportunities as a potter have continued to grow. I've been able to turn a hobby into a full-time profession. This is very much a dream come true and leads me to help inspire others through various teaching and volunteer opportunities. For the past two years, I've been volunteering with the Arts and Science Council as an advisory council member representing Mint Hill. ASC grant programs fund activities throughout Mecklenburg County, and earlier this year, it was reported that they were able to invest nearly $70,000 in Mint Hill-based creatives and cultural activity at the time. I can speak with certainty of that number's increase today due to receiving an emerging creator fellowship grant myself this spring. Art greatly impacted the path my life has taken. I have no doubts that continuing to invest in the interests and discovery of art, science, and culture will affect the well-being and strength of our local community as well. As an advocate for ASC, I'm confident in the role they play in helping build those bridges, and I appreciate-
industry, industries. The mix of uses ranged from light industrial operations and maker spaces to supporting office, retail, service uses. Therefore, Z C 23-5 was found to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for John or the applicant at this time? I do want to publicly thank the applicant. I requested that they get with you and clear up some things that I was concerned about, about product that they were going to use, and they did that immediately, and they, they responded well to my request. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion on, let's start with A, a motion to accept or modify the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Make a motion to accept the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve Z C 23-5.
I have a motion to have second.
Second.
Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. Item number nine, discussion and decision on Z C 23-7 filed by the Town of Mint Hill for tax parcel number 135-191-22 located at 6773 Lebanon Road to request site plan approval. John.
This application also went to the planning board on June 26th, and they offer a favorable recommendation as Z C 23-7 was found to be consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan indicates low-density residential property. Essential services are not specifically planned for in the land use plan, however, the unified development ordinance allows consideration of essential services in residential district through the conditional zoning process. Therefore, Z C 23-7 was found to be reasonable and in the public interest.
Anybody have any questions for John at this time? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept or modify the consistency statement. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consistency statement as presented by the Mint Hill Planning Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes and is accepted unanimously. Item number 10, appointments to the planning board. You have in front of you a memo for the terms of the following employees that will expire June the 30th, 2023. Members are Jennifer Manchester, Chip Todd, and Eric Tyson.
Motion to reappoint these three members, sir. Second.
I have a motion to reappoint these three in a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those three will be asked, be, be reappointed to the planning board. Item number 11, authorize the town manager to execute construction contract for Brief Road Park and discussion on park name. Let's first, let's break that out. I don't need an authorization to discuss park name, I don't believe, do I? Let's go with authorize the town manager to execute construction contract for Brief Road Park.
Justin Williams, staff engineer here at the town.
Address, please, sir. For the record.
Ask him.
For the record.
I know where he lives. Answer. So firstly, there is a site layout on the back of your handouts, so if you guys have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those here at the end. But as you all know, this park was designed in-house by staff, and it was recently advertised for construction bids. A total of four bids were received, and after review, Carolina Cajun Concrete Incorporated has been verified as the lowest responsive bidder with a total bid amount of $494,825. So with that, staff is recommending that you authorize the town manager to execute a contract with Carolina Cajun Concrete Incorporated to perform this work in the amount of $494,825. And go ahead.
Just briefly, would you mind for the people watching on television to tell them what the amenities are going to be involved in this park at this time, as well as the paving, sir?
Yep, so it will be new park directly across from a athletic association with a 1.9-acre dog park, a playground, and walking trails.
Thank you.
So, and just quickly on the park name, we did want to open that discussion up to the board to provide recommendations because it seems that the name Brief Road Park is not very popular. So we don't have to decide on that today, but we would like to have that settled by the September board meeting, just to give the contractor ample time to get that sign constructed. So that is all I have, unless there are any.
Any questions at this time?
Comment. I'm just happy to see this project finally getting underway. We've been sitting on this one for quite a while. I'm very happy about it, especially the dog park.
Yep. I think everybody's excited about it, staff's excited about it, so should get it moving here soon.
Will any of the grant money be used for funding on this?
This entire project will be funded with ARPA funding.
I'll make a comment that while we've got public people here, we don't have any problem hearing input from the public on the name of the park. I mentioned with a group at lunch today, who are not sitting here, of course, that I'd like to see it tied some way to the history of Mint Hill. I'm not big on parks named after people and that kind of thing, but if we could tie it some way to the history of Mint Hill, I'd like to see some research done on that and maybe come up with some ideas in that direction.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Number 11, we need to receive a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the contract.
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute construction contract for Brief Road Park.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12, other business and council members. We'll start with Commissioner Long. No, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Holton.
No, sir. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton.
Yes, the Chamber of Commerce is going to partner with the Historical Society and have an after-hours on next week, on the night, I think, July 9th. Try to make it if you could, please.
And that's going to be where?
At the Historical Society. I thought I said that.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing.
Saturday night, those soccer fields that we've kept you off of for, what's it been, Steve? Five or six years you've been working on that? Just kidding, just kidding. We're going to get ready to open that. We're going to have a ribbon cutting out there. It's, it coincides with one of our family fun nights. From 5:00 to about 7:00, we've got some volunteers that are going to be out there. We're going to have some soccer instruction for the kids. I think we've got some bounce houses and things lined up as well. I believe the fire department, if they're not out doing something else, will probably be spraying and wetting down the kids, and it may be the adults as well, based on the temperature out there today. And then it's finally been let out of the bag. After the band finishes playing at 9:00, we're going to have fireworks. So I'm excited about getting the park back open. The walking trail is going to be back open. Everything really looks really well out, really good out there. I want to commend staff. I'm cutting on Steve just because he's sitting there and his wife's in the room, so I want to see if I get him a little embarrassed anyway, but to stay on top of a project that size and, and bring the thing in in the reasonable time that they've already done it and still allowing the park to be open, they've had some challenges out there and, and staff has handled it well, and you always hear me preach about our staff here in town. That's just another example of, I've seen projects like that in other areas just go crazy, go haywire. So you guys are to be commended for getting that thing done for us. Anything further? If not, we're adjourned.